Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 13th, 2016. Now called to order at approximately 7 o'clock. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Local Access Programming. Is anyone here in the audience tonight recording tonight's meeting? Seeing none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is a discussion on windmill states. Come on up, introduce yourself to the board again and give us a little update on this.
Okay. John Stelmark for Emerson Homes in JW Land in regards to windmill states off of Prospect Street. We'll make it as quick as possible. Back in June, the board was kind enough to completely release four lots from the subdivision. And when we showed those lots, we had to basically just pick out of a hat which ones we thought we were going to sell first. Luckily, we sold three out of the four. And then we sold the fourth one, which was not one of the releases, the release lot, lot number eight. So I had a discussion with Matt and we had, I had discussed possibly pulling one back and like swapping a lot. But then Matt, you know, pointed it out to my attention that these are already recorded and the process that I would have to go through in order to do that swap, it would be better just to come in and request the board for an additional release on the lot that we had sold, which was lot number eight. And then as of today, one of the lots, number 11, we put under contract. So now we do have five under contract. And part of what we had discussed back in June was to be able to, on the release lots, to be able to put foundations in because of our grading and the amount of fill that we had up there to move. And the board was kind enough again to allow that to happen. Now these lots are completely released, but last week we hit a snag where after discussion with Bill Coyle and doing some testing on the subbase material of the road, which is two feet under the last foot of gravel, has to be removed. So now we've just added three weeks to the schedule of building the road to pull this material out, truck and purchase new material to bring in to replace this base material. So what I was, I was basically looking for the blessing of the board on the lots that have been released to be able to start at least a couple of frames on these lots once we get to that point. I think probably what will happen is we probably will be very close to getting ready to Blacktop. We have one foundation in up there now that we're backfilling and we should be ready to start frame on that within a week and a half to two weeks to try to keep on schedule because of this three-week delay now that we've got with pulling this material out. And then the third item on, on the agenda was the discussion of the bond. Because of what, I figured it would be best to get the bond in place as soon as possible for the board, for the town's benefit, to get as much bonded as possible right away. So I submitted to Town Engineer Bill Coyle values, which on a verbal discussion, I haven't seen his letter, but he supposedly sent the letter, I think, Matt today. I don't know if you received it yet, not Eric.
It may have come after hours.
Okay. It might have. But with verbal discussion with Bill on, on the phone, he had approved all the values that we had submitted. Now, these values that we accept for one value, which was we had a contingency of 15%, but the Town of Auburn requires 20%, so I don't have an issue with upping it to 20% on the contingency. Now, the bond value was set from the point that when we got the base coat of Blacktop. So I would not ask for the total subdivision to be released until we get this bond put in place as soon as possible, get ourselves all completed right up to the base coat of Blacktop as what's typically done, and then come back to the board for a release on a whole subdivision. We could probably put that bond into place as quick as a couple of weeks, once the figures are all approved and the board sees that. And then speaking with Matt today, we figured that it would be best that Blacktop season ends on November 15th, typically, depending upon weather, sometimes it can be extended, that we would come back in on November 8th to give the board a complete update. At that point in time, we should have everything with the subdivision done except those items that are on the bond issue. So that's basically the three things that are on the agenda.
Do you expect to have all five foundations on five lots in the house is up by winter?
That's what we're shooting for. I think that we'll be framing, you know, through into December at this point because we are a little bit behind schedule on the overall road. But now with this excavating, like two feet of additional fill, it takes the rough rate of three weeks, basically.
Okay. So before we get too far into it, does the Town have any comment on those three items and any recommendations based on your conversations?
Sure. In conversation with both Matt and Caleb regarding the lot release of Lot 8, neither department planning or building felt, you know, a sense of hesitation around releasing that lot. Regarding the framing, you know, we felt maybe pertinent to hear from Caleb who, you know, he's comfortable with framing. I think the general concern would be, you know, our house is going to be built and folks, you know, housed before a road is, is constructed and we don't, you know, we still, we're not saying that that's what would happen at all, you know. But in, in that case, we still have, Caleb has enforcement authority to kind of keep, even though those lots are released from the covenant, to keep the project on the right timeline and on the right track.
We usually have the bond in place before we start.
Yes.
Can you get it any sooner than two weeks, John?
Provided the figures are approved, which like say verbally-
I thought you said there was another letter. We had one, isn't there another letter that you said that Bill?
That I'm not, I'm not aware of.
Oh, okay.
So regarding the bond, to John's point, you know, the bond, the bond includes the completion of the road except for the installation of the subbase and the binder, of course.
But it's like our holding power.
It's our holding power. Exactly.
He's agreed that a 5% increase to 20% on the contingency. And how, how soon do you think you can?
I've already instructed, I've already instructed my attorney, we're going to use the form of tri-party agreement with the town and a letter of credit from, from the bank, which is what we standardly do. And I've already instructed my attorney, basically the, the planning board has a form right online and we're just going to use that form right offline, the town's form. And it's just a matter of as soon as we get the figures, plug them into the county agreement, submit it into the board, which we, I don't see any reason why we can't complete by the next meeting, so that we can get that bond in place.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Okay. So, so what are you looking for from us tonight?
Your blessing on, go ahead and on the loss of release to start the frame because of this three-week delay that I've now hit with the road.
So is that a lot?
Last week.
Eight and 11 or just eight?
Well, 11 was already released originally.
Four plus one.
It was two, five, 10, 11. We'll look to add eight because again of the, of the, can't really pull back, they're already recorded. I have to register these.
I would say if you get the approval or you're in agreement with the numbers with Coyle and we'll let it go through now if everybody's in agreement and then, but we'd like to see the bond in effect by two weeks from now.
I'll do everything in my power to get it written up.
Maybe you can help him get the letter from Bill.
Sure. Anybody else? Okay. So, what's the right terminology for the motion we're looking for in the lot release?
So we're looking to-
Something.
Yeah, you want to make a motion to release Lot 8 from the subdivision covenant.
And read that motion. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Okay. As soon as we get the figures, we'll get the bond up to you. Eric, I assume and Matt?
Yes.
That will be the procedure and get scheduled for the next meeting.
Obviously, you know, we, we want the, the letter that the town engineer is in agreement and then, you know, we'll submit that formally to the, to the board with the tri-party agreement and that will be, sounds like a, an item on our next agenda.
Okay.
For tonight, before you go, we've got the, the release here, so we'll have each of the members sign it and we've got Sarah who's going to notarize this.
So they're all signing it?
Yes.
You all know what you're signing and you're all signing this, so everyone free will?
Yes.
Then you can sign it. Okay. And then I'll, I'll notarize it.
Thanks, Sarah.
Please, I think we'll send you a copy of that.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it all. Good night. Forgive me, there were two matters of other business I should have brought up before. The first is Matt Benoit, the town planner, is going to be a little late tonight, but he will be here at some point throughout the evening. Second item is a matter of congratulations to John Regan, being a full member of the board now. So John was previously the alternate member and has now been made a full member of the board and the alternate position has been posted. So if anybody's interested in having, you know, this much fun every other Tuesday, submit your applications to the town. So while we're waiting on that, the next hearing would be on Marie T. Baker requesting a special permit for a Hammerhead Lot under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for construction of a single-family dwelling at 310 Lester Street. Anyone here for that? Before, before we get going, we need a motion to reopen the hearing.
No, we've continued it, so it's open.
Excellent.
Chapter 16 of the land area reaches a D group representative component. I just came to update where we're at right now. Recently, we've been considering to begin an A and R along the real way, considering that we've come to the conclusion that it is a right-of-way street in the town. So we've been working on an A and R. Recently got comments back from DPW and fire on the improvements that we required along the right-of-way. We were going to go the A and R route. They're asking for at least grindings to be placed 20 feet wide along the right-of-way, a turnaround at the end of the road and to make sure the electrical lines aren't going to interfere with the fire apparatus after access to site. Plan asks to continue tonight to one more hearing. We're meeting with the, the total costs for either one of the A and R route or the Hammerhead Route. Right now we're moving towards an A and R route. In a little bit more time, we'll be meeting with the attorneys next week.
Additional comments from the board?
Is there any wetlands that you have to get into to widen the road to 22?
We would have to go through the wetlands a little bit. There is a path there. There's also an existing culvert there that has been damaged throughout the process across and Bill wants us to improve that too when we're going up there. So we would need one conservation if we perform towards the back.
And he comes from the town? Okay. Anybody in the audience here for this hearing? Motion to continue?
And when, to, to what date? Did you have a date in mind for?
The next meeting should be fine. We're going to make a decision next week.
A motion to continue the hearing to September 27th?
Discussion quickly on that. How are we on time and do you have a letter?
So you've made the formal request, so we'll have him sign the continuance request form with your agreement now and then work it for another 30 days.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
So the next item, 715 application, we're beyond that for applicant Robert Nollet requesting a special permit under Chapter 16, earth fill of the Auburn general bylaws on property located at 22 Ashcroft Street. Mr. Nollet, welcome back.
I'm Marky, this is Bob Nollet. Yep, Bob Nollet, how you doing?
So if you'd like to give us a little update on where things stand, I know some information came in to the board today. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review that, so maybe you could talk a little bit about that as well.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So we're, we're here, we've previously gotten a special permit for the Hammerhead Lot and then we came back for a special permit for the earth fill. So that's what we're here for today. Last time we were here, we were asked to go through the town engineer and the conservation committee. We've done both of those. The conservation committee gave us a letter of immediate determination. The town engineer came back with a list of about a dozen or so issues and we've gone through all those and those are all on the updated plans. I got a letter from our engineer if that wasn't, if that took. So I think we're, I think we're all, all set with everything now.
So just a pointed, usually the board doesn't review things that are received kind of after the Thursday, the week before. We were put in front of us today, a letter dated today from, from Bill Coyle, I'm assuming. There's no end to this letter, do you have?
Did not copy on that side, so I guess to Bill Coyle.
Okay. So I guess if the board is so inclined, we could try to walk through that, see what items are outstanding, if any, and make a decision as to whether or not we're comfortable proceeding tonight or if we want to push it forward. Can I still?
Yes.
So item number one, provide the location of existing proposed utilities is acknowledged by Bill Coyle, so I think the board will be sufficient once anybody has any questions. If you do throughout this, if you're going to make a note. Two, provide benchmark locations acknowledged. It appears the plan is updated for that. Item three, which I know there was some conversation on today, the drawing shows a 14% grade along the proposed driveway. The engineers office, the first, the fire department relative to emergency access suitability of the driveway. The engineer's comment was the engineer defers to the fire department. Eric, do you want to give us a quick update on that conversation?
Is the letter approved?
We did, we did reach out to Chief Coleman regarding this comment and the, the grade of the driveway and we received an email from him stating that based on the length of the driveway, 250 feet, that he would be acceptable to a 14% grade.
Board, any questions or comment on that?
I'm confused by that. First it was 14% over 100 feet and then 14% over 200 feet, 50 feet. So the apparatus would slide down the hill and the ice and snow and then magically now it's 250 feet, the 14% grade didn't change. And so I'm just, I'm a little, you know, perplexed by, by that whole piece.
Sure, sure. I spoke with the chief today about exactly that. His chief concern was that it was such a, a steep for a short driveway, so there'd be no stopping distance at the bottom. When he learned that it was a longer distance and that there was space at the bottom to stop, he was okay with that.
Oh, okay. All right. If I close that up.
Any other questions on that?
Just one quick one. How long is the 14% grade?
You know, there's, if you look at the plans, it's kind of two straight sections. Those are certainly 14%. The curves are a little bit less.
That's, that answers my question, how many feet is the 14% grade?
I, I don't have a figure for that, but I mean, it's a significant portion of the driveway, yeah.
I thought I said it was just a little.
Do you have a comment?
No, I just said I thought I saw.
So.
Certainly scale it off to a full-size plan.
Well, so to just kind of summarize this, so the engineers department deferred to the fire department. Fire department satisfied, so I guess the question is, does the board have concerns beyond that or are we prepared with that?
I'm not so sure the chief understands that he's told it's a 40% grade, but the entire driveway is 250 feet long. That's great, but how long is a 14% grade if it's 50 feet? You know, you have some stopping distance if it's 200 feet out of the 250 feet, you don't. That was my only question was, I can see where it is on the plan, I just don't know how long it is. And it's on the corner. It's not like it's on a straight line.
So the actual stopping distance you're saying is from here to where that first starts to curb?
The stopping distance is from here. This is probably the national. This is a few broken down.
Well, if I, if I may, I mean, the stopping distance would also include past that, so I mean, there's at least 30 feet of driveway that, that's fairly level that, you know, we provide adequate stopping.
Well, beyond the steep grade there, goes from 570 to 565, it's another five foot rough. Like I said, I can't tell how long it is on a full-size plan, so I can, I can scale myself a mile.
Do you guys want to move along and come back to the end if there's any other questions? Sure. Item four is acknowledged, which is construction phase sediment and erosion control. The Town have any other comment?
The, the planning department had concern about the southern border of the, of the property, you know, and, you know, this, this isn't from the engineer, but we were interested in seeing hay bales and silt beds on this border as well to, to protect, you know, the neighboring property from runoff that would occur in that area. We were wondering if, you know.
Nope. We'd certainly put them in there. Absolutely.
And I'm not sure if it helps at all, but that property there is undeveloped, of course, so it's not like some slant or something like that.
I defer to the, to the board's concern on that, Ken.
Okay. So it sounds like the applicant would be amenable to putting that on the plan.
Absolutely.
Any additional questions? Number five, provide location of the foundation drain and roof drain. The roof drain shall discharge into a groundwater recharge system. The engineers comment is the foundation drain and roof drain locations have been provided. There's no identifying the foundation drain as foundation drain to daylight if necessary. Is the recommendation of the engineers office that the foundation drain is installed to daylight. Number six is acknowledged. Number seven, southern portion of the driveway is directing runoff to a channelized flow situation, which may require stabilization to prevent erosion. How is the runoff in the driveway being controlled? And the engineers comment, a gravel interceptive trench is proposed at the edge of the driveway near the garage. Provide construction detail for this trench. Eight, nine, and 10 are acknowledged. And then 11, previous plan showed earthwork calculations which are not shown on this plan. Please provide the information on the current plan.
Yeah, I didn't realize the house were missing on these plans until I was literally sitting in this meeting. None of the grading changed, so the 730, 515, and 215 numbers should all be the same.
Okay.
We did submit plans on 720 that had all those.
They had all those on there, yep.
Considering we just kind of received this and there's a couple items in there that now need to be modified, including the request from the town planner, you know, what the board's opinion is and whether they feel comfortable moving forward on this tonight or if they'd like to suggest come back in two weeks with a final set and approval from town engineer?
I think this tends to question on the driveway as well, so maybe we could, if I get it, get it all covered. Any additional comments?
My, to the chair, my only suggestion is that, you know, I'm certainly hearing the board, the board's concern on, on the grade and I think if, you know, perhaps it's wise to have town engineer and the fire chief at least get together and, you know, knock heads together on, on the driveway. And if it's necessary, they could reach out to your, your team as well.
That's what we need to do, just I know that winter's coming, so I'm really anxious to get the foundation in before we get frost and all of this stuff. If there's anything you can do.
Any other board comment?
The road's 250 feet and they can clearly see it there. So it's probably only from the end of Ashcroft Street about 200 feet to the house in a straight line.
In a straight line, certainly. That's into the right.
That's why they tried to serpentine it to get it more lengthened. Yeah. That's the whole premise behind that.
Softens the grade.
Yep, certainly, sir.
Maybe like 20% if it came straight down the hill.
Yeah, yeah. So Jason?
I mean, personally, it does seem steep, but I'm going with an engineer looked at it, deferred to somebody else and he made his decision on that. I'm not going to second guess the chief, say maybe he didn't think at all. I think if it was substantial, the engineer might have brought something up. The fact that it went, he didn't stop it, it may be okay. Yeah, I think it's kind of steep, but kind of went through two people. What qualified me to make a decision?
We have had two engineering firms look at it. They were both okay with it.
Any other board comment? Is anybody in the public here to talk about this tonight? Seeing none, defer to the board for either a, I guess, a motion continuance or a motion to move.
How can we, is it, we can get an answer quicker on any questions that Bill, if they ask you with it? And then we'll do a conditional?
The only issue with doing a conditional is, you know, I mean, to Jason's point, they both looked at it and they gave their okay. It's, it's an unknown of what.
Bill's okay with it, right?
Bill deferred to the chief, you know, acknowledging.
He was okay with that distance for his trucks.
Acknowledging that, he, Bill acknowledged the slope and, you know, brought it, brought it to our attention, so.
I would assume if Bill had a major issue with it, Bill would risen that issue himself into a letter. So seems to me the kind of outstanding issues would be, one being the road grade, which we do have confirmation from the town engineer as well as the fire chief that they're okay with. Second being the request on the hay bales as well as the cut and fill analysis, which I think we should somehow.
And the daylighting on it.
And the daylighting on the drain, which we should somehow condition in approval if we went that direction. Comment from the board?
Agreed.
So it sounds like I accept the motion.
We want to close the. Make a motion if we close the hearing?
Second?
All those in favor? Or any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then we make a motion to approve with the condition on the daylight, the hay bales. Is there anything else?
Got a cut for one else.
Cut for one else.
And then any of our standard conditions that we would want to include on the special permit?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's see, we go. Gosh, this is. You're all good. I want to get it.
So, we, to the chair, we have had a request that.
They be read?
That they be read. So, that would, that would be my suggestion.
Should we read all of them now, or should we, should the town make a recommendation of which ones they suggest? And then we read those?
Yes.
Yes.
Does the town have a, actually, do we have an extra one to get in case?
I don't think I got one.
No, he's.
All right. So I would think, and we'll read all the conditions that we plan to enact before we move forward, but. One, two. You want to give a recommendation from your.
One, two, three.
One, two.
So one, two.
Matt suggests that we wouldn't include three, that it would go with the land and not the applicant.
Okay. So, four, typically twenty-four months. Five, six, seven, eight. Soon nine. And then is this in the Asian older deal there?
I don't believe it is.
All right, so all but three and ten. Any?
All but three and ten.
Any discussion on that from the board? So that would be, condition one, special permit shall become effective only after it has been reported at Worcester Registered Deth and the copy of registrar's receipt returned to the town clerk. Two, the applicant shall comply with all applicable special permit requirements as outlined under section nine point three of the Auburn zoning bylaw. Skipping three, moving to four. This special permit shall lapse if the proposed use or its construction has not commenced except for good cause within a period of twenty-four months from the date of grant thereof. Five, the applicant shall abide by all approvals and conditions from state agencies or other town boards, departments, and commissions. Six, construction hours shall be Monday through Friday, eight AM to four thirty PM. Saturday, eight AM to noon, no work on Sundays or holidays. Seven, the lot shall be developed in accordance with the approved plan. Eight, the applicant shall approve a twenty-four by thirty-six as-built plan to the planning board once construction is completed. Nine, unless otherwise modified by a decision of the planning board or board of appeals, the applicant shall comply with chapter sixteen of her filling section five point O standards of filling. Any additional comments on that? So, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll draft the decision. We have a signature sheet here, and I did, I suggested that process.
So it looks good, you know, that's ready?
Yes.
So, seven twenty-five applicant, Jimmy George's, trustee of Prime Movers Trust, requesting a special permit for the Hammerhead Lot under section five point three point two of the Auburn zoning bylaws for proposed construction of a single-family dwelling at twelve William Street. The applicant, please approach and. So this will be a new hearing or is it going to be a motion? What's it going to be, a motion open?
Make a motion to open the hearing for Jimmy George's trustee of Prime Movers, requesting special permit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, please introduce yourself and welcome back.
Thank you. Jimmy George's?
We'd actually like to request to delay it to later tonight if the representation is not enough hearing.
Okay. So, you'd like to request to move later in the night, their legal representation is not here yet?
If, if our seven thirty is ready to go, the board could vote to move Prime Motor Group up in the agenda. That's, we're at seven thirty-five, so we could, we could hear the Prime Order Group now.
Is the board seeing that?
Make a motion to move the Prime Order Group up and delay the Jimmy George hearing until the attorney is around.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so, moving on. Seven thirty PM applicant, Prime Motor Group, requesting site plan approval under section three point two point six point three of the Auburn zoning bylaws for redevelopment of existing dealership at seven eighty Washington Street. Feel free to come on up to the table here and, after we open the hearing, introduce yourselves, so. Motion?
Motion to open the hearing?
All those in favor?
Aye.
If it's okay, Mr. Kim, we're just. Introduction, on the record, Larry Groder, counsel for Prime Ford, my firm is Fletcher Silver Worcester. And I'd introduce gentleman to my right is David Kelly from Kelly Engineering Group, who's going to present on site plan. They've been, they've done the design for the site as, as well as the wetland's design. Folks sitting here is Joe Rose, who's the facilities director of Prime Motor Group. Sean Van Creve, who's the general manager of Prime Ford here in town. And Garrett Bush, also from Kelly Engineering Group.
Gentleman, do you have cards on your visitor? For a row? Thanks.
You don't have a lot of these, do you?
Your card I have. We know you all.
So the project is a redevelopment of the Prime Ford Motor Dealership at, located at seven seventy-four and seven eighty Washington Street. The zoning is highway business, it's in the aquifer three zone. The site has been an auto dealership for about forty-five years, first Milbury Motors and Langway and now Prime. Site consists of about five contiguous parcels totaling ten point five two acres in total. They're located at seven seventy-four, seven eighty and Washington Street and Ten Faith Avenue. Presently, the site has three buildings, the present dealership building, which is a little over twenty-one thousand square feet. An accessory use building to the rear of the dealership building, a little over thirteen thousand square feet. And on the seven seventy-four Washington Street property, there's the former gas station, former interstate transmission building, which is about twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet in size. The project proposes in the end to demolish the existing dealership building, the twenty-one thousand plus square foot building, and replace it with thirty-seven thousand square foot building, which will provide more service, furthest before than the dealers. More service area, more customer service area, more sales area. Bring it up to current contemporary sort of requirements of the manufacturers. The development's going to occur in phases, and Mr. Kelly will go through that in a minute. The Ten Faith, we'll tell you, the Ten Faith Avenue pass is going to be used for automobile storage. We have applications pending presently before the conservation commission for ordinary conditions and hearing on that. We have a hearing scheduled Thursday with the zoning board of appeals for some zoning approvals, all, all of which would be special permits. Use of the cowwash and the HP zoning district. The cowwash will be, not a public cowwash, but it'll be internal to the dealership. Wash dealership cars, cars that are being sold, cars that are being put out there, dealership cars that are used for whatever purposes. And then the auto, there's a special permit for auto sales in the aquifer three zone, cowwash in the aquifer three zone. There's some typical storage of materials that require review by the zoning board for, you know, changing the oil it uses, for changing oils, greases and the like. And we'll provide that, all of that information will be provided to the zoning board. And also a special permit to remove earth within ten feet of the seasonal high groundwater, which is a pretty typical, not uncommon request. We anticipate that the board's going to have peer review done. I know that Matt, I've been in touch with him, he's solicited three proposals and we'll discuss that, I'm sure, later on, but we'll be prepared to deliver a check so that can get going within a couple of days. So I'm going to ask David Kelly to go through in general, then we'll answer any questions the board might have at this point in time, and anything that the butters might have or other members of the public who have questions.
Great, thank you, Larry. Again, for the record, my name is David Kelly, this is Kelly engineer. But I'm not sure, or the audience may want to look at the, look at the board, but it's a sort of a tight room, I think it'd be nice if everybody could see it. Are folks interested in seeing the boards that I put up for this, this evening? Over here is, okay. I just wanted to make sure so I can turn it, otherwise I was going to move to that side, so. Is that okay? Can you see it okay? Great. I'll try to, I'll work my back too, but it sounds like we'll be good seats over here if you are. Great, thank you very much. So, I'll, I'll just add the picture to what Attorney Broger described for you so that you can understand. I think you all are familiar with the site, you're probably more familiar than I am. You've been here presumably a while. So there are, there are two, we're, we're dealing with two parcels here. One is on this side of Hillcrest Avenue, and the second is on the east side. So just for reference, this is Washington Street and Twenty. And Hillcrest Avenue's through here, and as you know, Faith Avenue meanders its way around and to the back of the property. The existing dealership is located here. Parcel one, this portion over here is one point eight acres. The second portion of the property is this, is parcel, excuse me, not parcel one, is eight point seven acres. So the total, the total property is about ten point eight plus or minus acres. And that's outlined in the heavy green line on this plan. So, the existing dealership facility is here, there's a second maintenance building located here. And in this area here was a former automotive facility, automotive repair facility at the intersection of Faith Avenue and, and Washington Street. The, there's currently a number of different access points to the site. There's one on Faith Avenue, there's two in this parcel, there's another one here, there's another one here, and there's another one here. The primary route, which is the signal, is located in this, in this portion of the site. The existing building, as Larry pointed out, is twenty-one thousand square feet. That's this building here with the showroom in the front and the service area behind. And this secondary building is approximately thirteen thousand square feet. This small building at the end of the site is about twenty-three hundred square feet. You probably all are very familiar with the site and the topography, but if you were to travel in a westerly direction, the site, the, the ground rises. And just to give you a perspective of the elevations as you, as you run from, from east to west, the elevation at the intersection of Faith Ave and the property is approximately six fifty-eight. It rises to six seventy-three, plus or minus. The existing building is about six sixty-seven, six sixty-six, located here, lined up pretty much at the grade of the driveways on the east side. The site generally grades in this direction here, and there's a steep slope at the back. This site was filled in the past, so there's a very steep slope that runs back towards the wetland system, which are highlighted with these lines here. The inner line represents the wetlands itself, the other lines represent buffer zones. As Larry noted, we are going for the conservation commission for work within the buffer zones of wetlands. This site is currently wooded, though there's, there was clearly a foundation here and some path development in this portion of the site. And there's a neighborhood on, on this side, I just wanted to get the street quickly.
Servant.
Thank you very much. Located along here with residences that are located in the same zoning district. So that's, that's an overview of what the site looks like today. Again, I'm sure you're all very familiar with that. The site, as we're proposing, just to keep the same scale, actually, let me just move this down. So this is what's proposed, and it's just a colored version of the plans that you have in your sets already. This is the layout and zoning plan superimposed over an aerial photograph. The project will propose us to demolish the building, the main building which is located here in its entirety, and to construct a new state-of-the-art Ford dealership facility in this location here. The existing thirteen thousand square foot building will remain. The twenty-three hundred square foot building that was on this end of the site disappears. The new building, as Larry pointed out, has a, has a total square footage of thirty-seven thousand. On one floor, it's thirty-two thousand square feet, so really it's an increase in, in footprint of only about eleven thousand square feet. The redevelopment gives, gives the, gives Prime an opportunity to reposition this, reposition this dealership in a way that's modern and clean and organized, really per the Ford Motor Dealership's current prototype for development. So, the entire site is being reworked in some fashion. What we're initially, and immediately you'll notice that we've, we've eliminated a number of the curb cuts that were located along the various streets, Faith Avenue and Washington Street. So, we're eliminating the Faith Avenue connection here. We're eliminating the two driveways that are currently in this location. We're relocating the driveway that's approximately here back over to here. This will be essentially sort of a slip line in driveway to allow, to allow traffic to, to leave Route Twenty safely and get into the property, but there will be no exit at this point. And then finally, we're reusing the existing driveway here, almost in its identical location with some small geometry changes as you move into the site. But that's the primary access point, that's where the traffic signal is. We're maintaining Hillcrest Avenue, which is a private street located here. There was a suggestion by the planning department, which we're continuing to explore, that possibly we look into abandoning it because it's a sort of a cut through from Faith Avenue out to Washington Street. We're trying to examine the ownership rights that other folks may have, or rights of access, I should say, in Hillcrest Avenue, so we continue to explore that. But for the moment, we're working as if Hillcrest Avenue were to remain, as it, as it is today essentially. So we're reworking the entire parking area with the, with the primary access point being here and the western, westbound access point, as we're heading westbound to Washington Street, we could enter the property at this point. The service area is located here, the showroom is located, it should be the service drop-off area, the enclosed service drop-off area, like you see in all the modern dealerships, is located here. So as you enter with your, with your vehicle, your air, you enter here, and the vehicle, you'll just be written up, and the vehicle will be taken into the service areas, which are located in the back of the building, the showroom is in the front. And as Larry noted, there is a car wash back in this location here. It's designed, the car wash traffic will travel in this direction and then exit at this point. As Larry noted, this is just a, this is just a car wash facility for this dealership. It's not a public car wash facility, and it's a service to customers that come. I think you're probably familiar with this in many of the modern dealerships. So that's what this portion is here. This building remains, but it will get some facade and architectural enhancements to make it more attractive. It'll also be benefited by hiding it behind this new shiny building because it's not the most attractive building currently. So, the primary location for customer parking will be here. And the really customer employees, and the remaining areas are presumed or proposed to be for vehicle storage. This parcel, which is essentially currently undeveloped, will become a primary vehicle. storage parking lot. It will be really a sort of a quiet parking lot, it's designed to have vehicles there on more of a long-term basis. We designed the parking lot with our neighbors to the west in mind. Larry may have pointed out that we actually invited all of the neighbors to a, to a, an introduction to the project a few weeks back, and only one couple from the neighborhood came, and they seemed to be quite happy, I'd also seen tonight, they seemed to be quite happy with the project as proposed. We explained all the benefits and the thought process that we had put into it, and I can explain those to the board. We're particularly conscious of the neighbors on this side, and how we've addressed possible concerns with screening, lighting, and noise are as follows. Firstly, we pulled the parking lot back as far as we could from the residential neighbors along this side. Before we developed these plans, we walked the perimeter of the property, so we could understand all the pushpoints at the edges of the site. So we pulled this back as far as we could, we limited the grading as much as possible to maximize tree retention along this side. To that, to that end, we've proposed a small retaining wall, the limit, the further limit of grading, as it pushes towards the residential neighbors on this side. We have proposed an enhanced screen along this side, we have a landscaping plan, I see, this gentleman has pulled it out, that proposes a dense combination of deciduous and evergreen trees along this side, that will help to fill in any of the gaps that are currently, that currently exist in this, in this buffer along this side. We've also proposed a fence along the outer edge, a six-foot-high fence, that will further protect views from the homes that are lower on the side, if you're familiar, the topography drops on this side. And then finally, we designed the lighting plan in this area, so the light poles are further back from, from the neighborhood, they're located out of this side of the parking lot, and they're designed to all shine downwards. There was a question about whether there'd be a P A system, and that location, we said there would not be, so essentially, this is a quiet parking lot that maintains the maximum buffer along that side. That's an overview of the layout as, as you're looking at it. With regards to Conservation Commission issues that we're dealing with separately in stormwater, we've, we were told early on in an initial presentation to the department heads that they understood there was no stormwater management on the site, but they wanted to see it. So, we have, we designed the site to fully comply with the D E P stormwater management for redevelopment and new construction. And all of the stormwater that currently is on the site drains either overland and down paved swales, or over the slopes back to the wetlands at the back, or alternatively, there's a small section up here that ties to the drainage system that runs across and ultimately to the wetlands. But most of the site's uncontrolled today, and so we've proposed a system where we have curbing in all locations, deep-some catch basins, and all the facilities that you're normally used to see on a modern site. We have, we have an extensive stormwater management program put together, and a stormwater management design report that we've provided the board with, and we've also provided with each of the consultants that you're considering for peer review. Just some of the other checkboxes we have, we have, all the utilities that are, that we need are currently available, either onsite or at the, at the property line, including sewer, which travels to the back of the site and out to Faith Avenue. Topography is a challenge, and so we have, we've proposed a retaining wall along this side to support the slope. It's necessary, because we need to have that access around the building for fire, and also for circulation. So the site was a real challenge for, for all the reasons that I think you're beginning to figure out, but one real challenge that Larry noted earlier is the, and it relates to the timing of the project. In order to keep this business operating during construction, we need to try to keep the existing building, which you might remember is located over here, in, in, in activity during the construction of the, of the main project. So, the construction phasing would be to essentially fence off this location here, build this, build this parking lot, or maybe, I should back off slightly, build this parking lot and this parking lot firstly, so that the parking that's currently over here can be displaced, the storage vehicles can be displaced over here, then build this building while keeping this existing building operational. Once this building is, is up and operational, then this building will be taken down as the last phase of the final site work in this location here. So it's a real challenge, even though it seems to be a large site, it has some topographic challenges, and it has the challenges of keeping the business up and going during construction. Mr. Chairman, that's an overview, and I'm certainly answering any questions that you might have on the site.
Sure. First, just welcome Matt and Mike Townplanner to the meeting. Second, just a quick note about process, I'm sure Mr. Broder is familiar with this, but for the rest of the members of the team here. Typically tonight would be kind of an introduction to the project, we hear from you, if there are any members of the board that had comment, they can provide that initial comment upfront, as well as members of the public, and then the application will go out for a peer review. Typically, what we'd like to see is that when the application returns, that all of the items in the peer review have been acknowledged, so that those items are kind of behind us, any additional items can be addressed. And in addition to that, we'd like to have all the other, you know, permitting authorities kind of have weight in at that point as well, so we can make the final determination. Just a quick note for you guys, so you understand kind of how our, our process works, and Matt in there, if you step in, if I miss anything. Outside of that, I guess I'd ask the town first, if they had any comment on the proposal, and then we'd go to member comment, and then last have some public comment, if any.
No comment.
No comment.
No comment.
The town at this point.
They're speechless. Okay. Any board member comment?
Yeah, along the western border of your, your new storage area, there's a lot of evergreens that will be planted there, I see it at eight to 10-foot height, there's a lot of deciduous trees which will leave gaps in the winter time. I don't think anybody in that neighborhood wants to see park cars there all winter long. My suggestion would be, be the more evergreens or arborvitaries or something to block that 24/7, 365 days a year.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Not only that, not only that, they're not gonna wanna be, wanting to be cleaning up your panel cleaves.
Fair point.
Is there, oh, sorry.
Veronica.
Is there a road on the existing rear building, the 10, Daca 10 building, is there a road that goes around that?
There's not, there's currently a slope at the back of the building, this is an existing building to remain, so it's been there. Access will, really won't change much to that building as a part of this, it might be a little easier to get in and out of the site, because the site's gonna be much better defined, with a lot less congestion, but essentially, there, there is currently no access point at the back.
Do we require that with a new site coming up? Yeah. Will we require that?
Through the chair, the question is, will the access road behind the building be required? I believe that's direct abut to the wetlands, right behind that building, is?
Yeah, wetlands is over here, and there's a steep slope at the back of the building. I can give you a break, but I suspect it drops about 15 feet behind the building, almost immediately. And we have access on three sides, and as I noted, it'll be a little better and cleaner access than it currently is.
Okay, next question, the parking lot, what is that zone currently?
Well, the entire site is in...
All is H B R O.
Yeah.
All of it?
All of it.
Yes.
Including the neighborhood?
Yeah, including the residential neighbors, yeah.
Duration of your project?
So because it's a phased project, I know Joe, this is Joe Rose, who's involved more in the construction activity with Prime, and Joe may be able to comment on the total length, how many eight months, Joe, if that you're right?
Yeah, I would, no more than that.
How many?
No more than 18 months.
And you'll do the parking lots and that type of stuff first, and then the last thing will be the building to come down and the new building to go up? Or is the new building gonna be able to go up with the existing one still in place?
That's our plan, yes, the parking, the parking lots first.
So the buildings don't overlap at all?
Right, they're 10 feet apart, which is some of the challenges of the site.
Any other questions?
Any earth removal that's within 25 feet of groundwater?
No. We have permit in there for 10, it basically deals with the...
Probably just an overparking up right here.
Just a small area?
Yeah.
Were there any fuel tanks on site that are gonna be moved?
There's an existing oil tank that was removed, and this is currently designed to be a propane building, but they're examining all the options for the most efficient fuel.
Has all the soil been sampled around that old oil tank to make sure it's clean?
Yes, not clean, yes.
Veronica.
Have you done some extensive testing where the gas station was in the transmission place?
I'm not sure, Joe, this area here you're talking about, right? I'm not sure what additional testing was done, but...
Wendy, any other questions?
No, none of this.
Jason?
No.
John Aron?
Also.
Okay. Okay, any members of the public have any questions on the project while they're here today? Okay. Seeing now, I think the next step would be to select a peer review, is that right? Does the town have any recommendations?
Through the chair, the town reached out on behalf of the board to three engineering firms for peer reviews, so staying close to the peer review. We reached out to Grave Engineering, Waterman Design, and Littart Engineering. The quotes for the work were all comparable. Graves and Waterman came in on the lower end and, you know, due to some timeframe stipulations that Waterman had detailed, said they couldn't be in for about two weeks, we'd like to recommend Graves to the board.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine with us.
Any board comment? Do we need a motion then, or you just proceed?
Just need the amount so we can get a check to the town as soon as possible.
Sure, sure they can help you with that.
Eighty-four hundred?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, no other comment from the board, or the public, or the applicant, we have a peer, peer review in place, I would assume the next item would be to continue, you guys have a date in mind?
I'd like to say two weeks, but a month is, is much more, that's not gonna happen, we all know that. So, I would say the first meeting in October.
Entertaining motion to continue to the first meeting in October?
Do you know the dates?
All right.
Motion to continue adhering to October 7?
My second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next one? Say you then. Thank you. Yes, we'll finish completely after the way. Yeah. Yes. Sign on this date, and I'll look at it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Either I'm in to us and forming the meeting, or bring them on to share.
Can you tell them about the Thursday deadline? Okay. All right, so, at this time, I think we would re-welcome Jimmy Georges, trustee for the Prime Movers Trust, requesting a special permit, and...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Welcome. So, we've already opened the hearing previously, so I think we're good to go, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for taking me out of order, I had to be in Sterling, where I've been on a project that's been going since last November, maybe, and the permitting state was so... But anyways, I'm here tonight with Jimmy Georges, who's trustee of the Prime Movers Trust, requesting a special permit from your board for a hammerhead lot. You have seen this application before, however, there have been some updates to the plans, and I'm hoping to be able to provide you with a little bit of context and some additional information for your consideration tonight. The hammerhead lot provisions, as you know, are contained in Section 5.3.2 of the zoning by law. I've outlined in the application rationale and reasoning why I think that those nine criteria have been met. Those are, in a lot of instances, those are the dimensional requirements, but I, I will go through those, because I think it's important to do that. So I don't know, Matt's got the plan up on the board, or we've got it, Joe, on this, on this sideboard here. So the 5.3.2.1, the criteria is that each hammerhead lot must have a minimum of 50 feet of frontage on an accepted town road, and a minimum lot width of 50 feet, as you can see on the plan. There is provided 50 feet of frontage on the hammerhead lot. 5.3.2.2, each hammerhead lot must meet the square footage requirement, and in this particular zoning district, the R A zoning district, we meet that criteria, for some reason I'm not finding the cause. The R A zoning district requires 20,000 square feet of lot area, and this parcel has 20,090 square feet. 5.3.2.3, no more than two hammerhead lots, shall have continuous frontage, and this is a creation of one hammerhead lot, so it's not two in, in, two in a row here, this is just one isolated hammerhead lot. 5.3.2.4, each hammerhead lot must contain an area which is circle with a diameter equal to the normal frontage requirement in the zoning district, may be placed without touching any property line. That would be in this particular case, if you wanna point to, if you wanna point to the diameter, but it's 100 foot. Is that right? 100 feet? Yes. In that circle area, and you can see it doesn't, doesn't have any problem making it in that hammerhead area. This is also summarized in that zoning summary table up on the top left of the, of the plan. 5.3.2.5, access to the hammerhead lot must be across the frontage of the lot, and that's the case here, you can see the, the driveway coming from William Street, straight to the back, leading up to the house, so the access goes right through that 50-foot neck, back to the, back to the head of the, head of the lot. 5.3.2.6, any hammerhead lot shall be limited to single-family dwelling, and that's the case here, the proposal is for a single-family dwelling on the rear. Proposal must be shown on the plan, we've done that, you can see the outline of the box for the house to be contained within, and set forth on the plan. There's not a, not a particular issue with topographies, no wetlands, steep slopes, I think if you look at the, the plan, you'll see the, you know, the highest point on the site's 104 feet, down to 94 feet on the, on the western side, where it slopes off a little bit, but generally speaking, the, up where the house is and the driveway is pretty flat. The proposed, 5.3.2.7, the proposed house location shall not be in the handle of the hammerhead, and it's not, it's back beyond the existing home. 5.3.2.8, any hammerhead lot must have adequate access to the, to the buildable portion of the proposed lot, it's, you know, there's nothing precluding access to the back, the, it's relatively flat over there, the driveway makes it a pretty straight line to the back and then just return to the house. And then 5.3.2.9, special per... And then 5.3.2.9, a special permit authorizing the hammerhead lot shall provide, the hammerhead lot shall not be provided further to reduce its area but to create additional lots. And that's certainly an acceptable condition to be the case. Certainly not part of the proposal to create any more lots than the hammerhead and carve off that existing home. So those are the criteria that are in your bylaws specifically related to hammerhead lots. I'd like to pause and see if there are any questions or comments on those before, because I think it's important to also touch on Section 9.3.5 of the bylaw. Uh, any members of the board? John, any questions on that before this?
What was that component, Todd? What was the one you just said?
The last one, that it would just be one hammerhead lot. It wouldn't be further subdivided into multiple other lots. Jason, any opinions at this point? Okay? If we get those, you can move on. Okay. And I didn't do it in the beginning, but I should introduce Pat Burke from the HSNT group and Jimmy Georges as the applicant and owner of the property. The section 9.3.5 of the bylaw talks about any board that is yours or the ZBA who's looking at issuance of a special permit will look at these particular criteria. And again, there happen to be nine. I will say, I don't think that, uh, some of them aren't, uh, there's not a lot to say about them. This is one single-family home, so things like the impact on the educational facilities, I think we can all imagine what that, what the impact is. It's a possibility of a few schoolchildren. But I think the 9.3.5.1 is one worth discussion. I think you had some discussion on this concept on the last go-around with this application. And that's the degree to which the activity, site plan, and building design are consistent with the surrounding development. Sure?
To the chair, I also believe that we had, we were concerned about the risk of erosion, siltation, increased storm runoff, displacement of natural habitats. There seems to be a lot of ledge in that area. There was some concern from homeowners about the way it was going to change the flow of water in the area. Some of the homeowners were already dealing with water issues, as I recall. I can see this gentleman back here shaking his head, so that one came into play as well. It didn't, a lot of it about the, uh, the character of the neighborhood certainly came into play. But 9.3.5.5 certainly figured into the decision as well.
Okay, well, why don't I have, Pat, if you don't mind, just explain the site, topography, what we're doing with landscaping, screening, what we're doing with drainage? Because I think that's, we'll get to that. Will you do that too? If you could just make specific mention of things that are different on this plan versus the last plan?
Sure. What we've done generally at the site and other existing divisions is let me width the slopes from front to the back, getting much concentrated along this corner in the back lot. Residential housing, similar to what we're proposing on either side. There's condos in the back of this area of the site. What we've done, we've met with fire chief previously. We increased the width of the driveway to 14 feet to have full access to the back. The department of engineering department has reviewed the drainage. The drainage is going to be contained rooftop for most going to a subsurface filtration system here, connecting to the roof leaders and the foundation drain. It's going to daylight out here to a refresh flash pad coming out of the site here in the back corner. We're also putting a swale along the side of this property line where the drainage, where it currently would go to the property line, now is being directed and controlled to the back of the site to help them out with the system drainage problem that they're having now. Arboreidies we're proposing now along the whole line of this property line. And to the back, there's an L-shaped arboreidies here also to control the water coming around outside. We're swaling it, controlling it on our site, directing it towards the swale into the back here. We're discharging to the back.
So some of the changes are an increase, you know, significant increase in the landscaping, particularly on the side where 16 William Street is, and then additional plantings over on the other side. And some of the planned changes were partly to address the September 9th letter that we received and came through Matt from the engineering department. There were four comments on there. They wanted a daylight to the cul-de-sac chamber and the drainage system, and that's what Pat pointed out on the left-hand side of the site. So any access would be pushed out of the chamber down to that area, and then there'll be a riprap system to, you know, keep letting it integrate into the land. They asked about a well, whether that was existing or proposed.
I guess there's a wellhouse on site. There's an existing well in the center of the property. There's a structure here. It's kind of a wellhouse with this big it coming out. We were gonna, we weren't sure if that was related to this well or not without breaking into it. So if this is a well we had discussed in the last hearings, we're going to ban it in accordance with the regulations.
And there's a well on the...
Yeah, there's a proposed well on our site, a new well.
Additionally, from the engineering department, they wanted to know the quantity and the spacing of the arboreidies, and that's now supplied on the plan. Approximately 12 feet in height, 4 feet on center, approximately 40 plants on left side and 25 on the right-hand side as you're looking at it. And then they had a note about not for construction and what that means. But this is a, this is, I presume, a permitting set from Pat.
Yes.
So that was, so there were some changes that were in direct response to the engineering department changes. So that's, those are the, no, those are the ways in which we're handling storm runoff, the removal of some of the vegetation there. So Todd, I think Wendy brought up, I'm sure you're familiar with the dialogue we had in the last couple of meetings, rather than rehashing a lot of that, but I think you've given some extensive dialogue in here commenting on that. Do you want to just quickly run through that in particular, consisting with the surrounding development components and some of the other ones that, you know, we talked about in line? Yeah, I was going to bounce back, but I just didn't know if there was any follow-up questions or thoughts about the 9.3.5.1. Any others comment on that point?
Do you have the print that shows the houses to the right of those two there? Do you have any existing house locations on that? That big lot to the right?
To the chair, I could pull those up on a map if you'd like. The applicant only has to show, you mean the rest of the road?
We want to see the rest of the other houses and what that looks like.
Sure, a few moments, I'll have that up.
Okay.
I did some of that work when I was looking at addressing 9.3.5.1. There's a lot of information contained in a couple of paragraphs, but I will walk you through that because I think it is helpful. So this map pulls that up, and you'll get a sense of it from the overhead. But there are, you know, there are, to address whether this is consistent with the surrounding development, the surrounding area, there are several hammerhead lots, you know, in the area in the vicinity of the property, including one which is directly across the street. It is a smaller hammerhead. The lot at 9 William Street is a .4 acre parcel, according to the assessor's map. You know, here we're offering a, sorry, switch back and forth between notes. Ours is .46 acres, so the hammerhead lot that we're proposing is slightly larger than the 9 William Street lot. There are also two hammerhead lots at 49 and 49A Rochdale Street, which is north of the property. When you talk about this, can you just show those quickly on the plan to see if you can...
49 and 49A Rochdale.
Yeah. So these are the one right against the water there on the left? Yeah.
Right.
Exactly, call that part of the neighborhood.
Right.
It's a stretch.
It's not, it's not right in the neighborhood, but it's in the general vicinity, in the same zoning district, I believe, unless mistaken. It's the, you know, it's the RA zoning district. So the one at 49 is .4 acres. The one at 49A is .55 acres. So again, we're .46 acres, right in line with what's already existing out there. There are also two hammerhead lots across Oxford Street on Park, 6 Park Terrace. So just a quick question on this one, maybe more for the town, but that lot right there seems to have frontage on a right-of-way being Park Terrace. What was that a hammerhead of? I guess is a question. I don't know. Okay.
Seems to have, through the chair, seems to have 64 feet of frontage.
Less than the required 100 feet of frontage. So it makes it similar and characteristic to a hammerhead lot. Doesn't necessarily mean it was created as a hammerhead lot. Right. I didn't do the, I didn't do all the title work on all these properties, but I'm just looking at general shapes and dimension. The other one is 29 Park, which appears to be undeveloped. So similar kind of situation that it already has. It's right along the street again. Right. Maybe that didn't show up on my map, but that's a .23 acre parcel.
Now, can you get William Street back?
Yes. When you look at William Street and wonder whether or not what we create is going to be consistent with the surrounding area, in fact, it is. When you look at the lots coming up and along William Street, if you sort of disregard the larger undeveloped parcels at the end of the roads, there are, call it 10, I believe, developed lots. Six of the 10 are smaller than what we will have as the remaining lot. So the remaining lot, as I'll call it, where it has the existing number 12 William Street residence on there, is .27 acres in size. And six out of the 10 lots on the road which are developed are that size or smaller. So that falls right in line. What we would leave as the remaining parcel of 12 falls right in line with what's existing. And again, the hammerhead is in line with other hammerheads that we pointed out.
Can you show which lot it is there, Todd?
Sure.
That one right there, and the driveway's coming into the left of it.
Correct.
And the house is going up in that area in the back.
Correct.
Well, the inconsistency that I see with the surroundings of the neighborhood is that there's going to be a house in somebody's backyard.
Which happens at 9 William Street?
Those two houses are lined up above the same location, so it's really not, you know, in their backyard. And it's lined up with the other house next to it.
I'm not sure how long that is there.
If you go down William Street to it, also point, almost can't see the house at that, which is interesting, kind of soft, just a kind of commentary, but... Well, it's, I mean, if you're interested in the placement of the house, I mean, it's over on the right-hand side of this particular parcel. I don't know if Pat could tell you off the top of his head whether there's any impediment to sliding it to the left, but I think the slope changes a little bit over there. And, you know, this seems to limit the impact on the abutters to the extent that it is really in the rear of number 10, quite a ways back, trying to provide that landscaping buffer that we proposed on the plan. So it's, distance-wise, it's a relatively large distance away. Pushing it closer to 16 may impact more so. Any questions on that? Keep going through this. So those were the, you know, those were the criteria in that 9.3.5.1, which I think, you know, were a big discussion point at the last proceeding. So our feeling is it is consistent with other lots in the area, other hammerheads, and other developed lots in the neighborhood. The other impacts on the other items, I think, as a member pointed out, the impact on education and things of that nature is one house going in. So impact on traffic is very minor. Employment and physical consequences, there is none of it. Some of those criteria just don't apply to this particular item. Okay. Does the town have any comment? I'd be interested to hear what the public, if they have any further insight, should. Members of the board, before we go to the public? So we open it up at this time to public comment. If you wanted to address, we'd ask, try to do it in an orderly fashion, but also please state your name and your address as well before your comments. Sure?
My name is Marco Fischer. I'm at 16 Williams, which is just to the left of the proposed driveway. And as most of the board remembers from their field trip out to the 16 and 12 area, there's, where they proposed to do the driveway is actually raised, and there's a lot of ledge right there. That same ledge that runs through that whole chunk of the street, including directly into my basement. And my biggest concern around this, while I don't want somebody, somebody's house looking right into my backyard, my biggest concern is the water in the ledge. Because there's going to be equipment, breaking ledge, opening up veins, et cetera, that's already providing water into my basement as a, just natural state of the ledge. And there's nothing that can be done from a guaranteed perspective that my property, which I purchased as a single-family with a private backyard, is going to have a dry basement or not more problems from this construction. That's my single biggest concern. And as you remember, that ledge is a good several feet off the street. It's not a simple, just paving. It's up quite a bit off the street, and they're going to have to dig into pure ledge to create that driveway. Thank you.
Sure. Matt, do you have a street view, just to...
It'll be in just a moment.
Sure.
If you want to carry, ask another, this could take a couple minutes.
Okay. Sure.
My name is Steve Paulino. I live at number 10 to the right with this property. I have about a 1,300 square foot ranch with a two-car attached. When I bought the property, it was to get into town and to find someplace that had some sublution, had some land, had some areas that were nice and quiet. This would really be putting this home in my backyard. It's not what I signed up for. And especially if the proposed site, I know it's only under for a lot of people. If you live in this part of town with the ledge that's on there, you've got water in your basement. If you're on ledge, you can hear it when the trucks travel down Oxford Street and they hit a frost wave, you can feel it in the home. The water does, is an issue to begin with. The proximity of the house, my privacy is my backyard. I don't think anyone would sit out in the front yard, you know, Sunday, and you do whatever you do recreationally. It would put a damper on the way things would be and the quality of life that I'm going to have with that in my, you know, in my side yard or backyard. And especially if that, if that home at this point is going to wind up being similar to numbers one and three, which are 1,700 square foot raised with a two-car under. You know, so I'm going to have, not only is it going to be a home in my backyard, it's going to be a monster in my backyard. It's not like we're putting in, you know, an 800 square foot ranch or something to that. And I know we're not at that level, but just so you have an idea of my home, that's where we're at. It would impact, you know, my wife and I's lives. I just retired in December. And I understand people want to live in certain places and do certain things, maybe qualify, but I know it was mentioned about the certain lots and so forth, and the hammerhead lots that are there. A little quick history, when I moved into the neighborhood, number seven, which is across the street, number nine, excuse me, number nine is that hammerhead lot. I don't know if you've been to the area, but a lot of you guys may have. That just sold. It's down on the right. It's got, it's like three little sheds, virtually inhabitable, it's been empty. The people abandoned it. Basically, it floats because it's in the water. It's behind all the homes that are on in the front. That tract of land that goes parallel with William Street behind those... tract of land that goes parallel with William Street behind those houses on that side of the road, on the odd side of the road, behind there is all three, two days, two days of rain and you see standing water. And that's why this, there was an impact on, when number three was built, the owner's here. There was a water issue in the wetlands and so forth that he had to go through. So, there's been, there is an outstanding issue. That home was built in probably the turn of the century. I'm sure it's, it's not something that somebody came in here and got a pool for, for a hammerhead lot. The other homes on Park Street also, they're not recent. These are houses that have been there a long time. And I understand, again, that, you know, as, as the attorney again mentioned, you know, it does fit all the criteria and it just makes it in and just exactly the way it should be. It's just that that would impact. If you want to turn around and take a look at my house, and you can also shoot across the street and look at numbers one and three, the height is, you know, it's two and a half stories high, it's, it's got a partial basement that's above ground. It's definitely going to impact. So, it's, you know, strictly up to you people what you want to do, but I personally don't think that fits in with the neighborhood. It's not what the neighborhood was about, but that's all I can say. Thank you very much. Good time.
Sir?
Good evening. John Ford, three William Street. I'm probably the, I guess, the newest neighbor on the street. I've been the neighbor now for a year. You know, my two biggest concerns would be number one, property value. Not knowing, putting the house behind the house, how that would affect my value. So, I would have a certain concern. Not aesthetically. I'm not sure if it's pleasing or not depending on the house size, but from my perspective, I'd be concerned of my own value going forward. Secondarily, there's major issues with the road right now. Probably need to be paved over, kind of fifteen years ago. It's about as bad as it gets. I had Bill coming on last week to review it. I think with the additional machinery, that would certainly should cause questions as to the integrity of the road and both before, during, and after the project that we did move forward. So, those are my two concerns. So, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Okay. Coming back to the board, if the app wanted to address any of those, actually.
Well, we decided to save it, technically, to account for the, the, not the ledge here, considering the possibility of, of any ledge here. So, we, we kept the driveway up higher than we actually needed to here in the area. So, we have a high point here, coming up around the edge, kind of chipping out probably two to three feet of the ledge area in here to get the driveway in here. We also looked at moving the house over, which, if we're like, consider that, we could do that also. We, we tried to center it, keep it any distance for the, the neighbors' houses coming out of the driveway here, which is less intrusive.
We have, you know, that, the drainage swale also up along the left-hand side of, of the property should help to at least control what we have control over as far as water on-site and drainage patterns. We can't, can't fix the whole neighborhood in that sense, but certainly don't want to cause a bigger problem. And I think that, that swale, I mean, that's what, that's, that's meant for. This is a, a construction of a single-family home. You don't often see drainage swale in a, in a drainage system like they have on this particular property. That's meant to address that concern.
Additional board comment?
I just think that it adversely affects the integrity and character of the neighborhood. Isn't what the intention of a hammerhead lot would have been at the time.
So, that, we, we've kind of covered this in, in the previous hearing, but personally I don't kind of agree with that. I guess my request would be for town planner to request town council to review this and potentially give us a recommendation. One thing I don't want to do is, you know, tie up a lot of the town's funding for the long-term and then have the litigation. So, just want to make sure that the town kind of, council would agree with, with our opinion. But I think a lot of members of the board seem to agree that, you know, I don't know that the examples that were shown really show me to be consistent with this. And I also don't know that it's, in my mind, consistent with, you know, the intention of a hammerhead. I think, I also think, you know, would the neighbors on that street, when they bought in, have a reasonable expectation that they'd have a house in their backyard? And I, I find that very hard to believe in this circumstance. So, I guess that would be my concern. And I'd, I'd ask the town planner to speak with town council and get their opinion on that as well. Just one second. Jason, do you have any comments on it?
I agree.
Do you just want to make a few comments?
Yeah, just like, I'm, I'm building the house just to move in. It's not something that, it's a development or something to profit from. I just like the location that it's close to the highway. And I work with the neighbors and try to do everything that I can in order to, to build the house and not inconvenience anybody. We propose putting the everybody's that can move up to fifty feet, where they can block every house that is going to be built over there. And that's why we even put in a height of twelve, up to twelve feet before any constructions. That way, we don't inconvenience anybody and any privacy issues or anything like that. And then also, as far as affecting the, the road, we talked to DPW, and it is scheduled to be paved probably next year or the year after. And we're looking to get the house in, basically to move in as quickly as possible. So, any issues that's concerning the street will be paved accordingly. And if there's any water issues with the neighborhood, I'm going to be living there. I don't want any neighbors that are upset at me. We can address it at the time. And going from there, it's something that, just basically catching the highway, real, close, close to the highway. And that's the only reason we want to build a house over there. It's, it's similar to the neighborhood, to the new houses that are being built. And talking to real estate agents and, and talking to different people that have experience in real estate, it's going to, it's only going to bring the value of the neighborhood. I'm, I'm fixing the house in front of it, putting a lot of money into it. There was a abandoned house that I put a lot of money into it to bring the value of the neighborhood. I'm building my own house. It's not, so I can bring the value down. It's more to bring the value up, and it's not going to be something that affects the neighbors or the real estate from that regard.
Just, because it may be helpful to the neighbors as we discuss this, do you have a sense, do you have an idea of what kind of house you're going to build there? Is it similar to the ones at the end of the street, which we're going with concerns, or is it...
It is, it is similar. If, if it affects somebody else, we can alter it a little bit, so it's not as high. But, because I want to work with everybody, I want to be, have a good neighbors. I want to interact with my neighborhood, my neighbors. I don't want to be in there and just cause any issues. Anything that would address that. It's, I'm building it, probably, the house is on the front of the street, sold for three hundred thousand dollars. It's something that basically going to be equivalent to it. And as far as being in the backyard, talking to the experts, they have no issues with, with it being affecting any other neighbors or any houses, back and forth. We put the trees along number ten and all along number sixteen, so privacy issue is not going to be concerned as those trees go up to fifty feet.
Board comment?
No, I've never seen it. I've probably grew a fifty feet, twenty feet, usually to match twenty-five, number fifty. Can't live that long.
Yeah, I just want to add something for posterity, but these images that you're seeing on the screen are actually from two thousand eleven. I'm just looking at the raw condition itself and imagine what direction it's moved in the last five years.
Wendy?
I'd make a motion that we move it to, to town council, to look at our decision.
Sure. Yeah, so we're going to add that. Well, this is a new application, so sign concerns start today.
And the applicant would, would agree to allow you to consult with town council and come back?
So, consult with town council and come back. When would you suggest, Matt?
I just want to, want to clarification through the chair. Uh, consult with town council regarding, assuming section nine point three point five is criteria under the special permanent granting authority, notably nine three five one, to the degree to which the activity, site plan, building design are consistent with the surrounding development. And...
I think it's kind of...
If there's any other section.
Yeah, the items in, in kind of that, entirety was the, the sentence I got from Wendy and the rest of the folks.
And nine three five seven, Mr. Chairman, environmental compatibility of the proposal with the neighborhood character.
Sure. They didn't balt them anything else?
They also took chair, nine three five one, nine three five four, nine three five five.
Okay.
We would be amenable to, to a continuation for that purpose.
Recommendation on, on timing that, you know, when the town council about to meet it?
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be until the next meeting. And if, if feedback isn't back by then, I could be in touch with the applicant if it needs to go any longer.
That's fine. Sure. So, that would bring us to the twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
So, Wendy, do you want to finish that motion?
Sure. Make a motion to the continuing here, I think, to September twenty-seven? On September twenty-seven, wherever.
September twenty-seven?
No, it's...
No, September twenty.
Go back to twenty.
I don't know.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, we'll see you...
Thank you.
In two weeks, and certainly understand the desire to be in on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, speeding right along. Applicant Chow Lee LLC, excuse me if I said that wrong, requesting site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the Urban Zoning Bylaw for the construction of a commercial parking lot at twenty-five Chab.
Yes.
Say you as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
With me tonight, Chow Lee, Michael Chow, owner and operator.
Open the hearing, sorry, before we...
Make a motion to open the hearing for the Chow Lee LLC requesting site plan approval under section nine point four point one.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Great. Sorry.
That's okay. Michael Chow, owner and operator of Yongshing Restaurant. Chow Lee LLC is the property owning, property ownership entity for the, for the restaurant. And Jason, Jason DuBois from DC Engineering here as well. So, we're, we're here for site plan. We, we have filed applications with zoning board for special permits for operation of a parking lot in this particular zone, and it's in Anopra Protection District Two, I think. So, we're, we're at zoning board on Thursday, but we still wanted to come meet with you, walk through the, the site plan as submitted, try to field any preliminary, you know, questions that, that you may have. And we do know that we'd be requesting a continuation. We want to make sure that we satisfied zoning board's appeals and those special permits before concluding with you folks. So, a bit of a preliminary, but I think we can hope to get something out of this. So, as you can see up on the board, as Matt's pulling it up, and maybe I'll stand for a second, but Yongshing Restaurant here, almost immediately on the ramp, if you haven't been to Yongshing, I'm sure you have. As you know, it used to be in Cherry Square when the high school project came along. Mr. Chow was pushed out a little bit, purchased this lot from the town, and developed the current restaurant. It's got parking here. Parking is a problem for this particular restaurant. It's a good restaurant, it's a good operator, it's successful, people enjoy being there. So, parking's a problem. People park at McDonald's, they're not happy. People park at Auburn High, walk across the street. They park at the insurance agency, walk across the street. Not good for anybody but else. So, Michael's been trying to find a solution, and the lot back here at twenty-five, I don't know why that says the best of court, but it moves together.
Present court's up for it.
Okay. Became available, and Michael purchased that several months ago. Since that time, we've been working on some plans to develop a parking lot on that particular parcel. Ninety-three spaces? Ninety-three spaces, landscaping around it, vinyl fences around it, some site lighting, which we can walk through in a little bit. But the, the whole idea is, he's got to help the parking situation. It's, it's a problem. This lot became available, the lot that's in between the existing restaurant, and this lot is not yet available. Perhaps someday it will be, but for the current time being, this is the, you know, this is the lot that's available, and Michael's solution to the parking issues. So, I'll turn it to Jason to kind of walk you through in a little bit more detail what the site plan actually shows you, drainage, it's got some drainage components to it, lighting, landscaping.
Again, I'm Jason DuBois from DC Engineering. So, the site here, it's just over an acre in size. There's an existing structure on the house.
It's gone.
Yeah, it's gone. An old, an old house that's been demolished just recently. We do have ninety-three post spaces here. Parking lot is a little hard to see on the screen here, but basically the entrance is, is right here, and basically wraps around, wraps around the site up into here, and then back down, and then back out. So, there's a single, a single entrance in and out. Again, it's a little bit hard to see, but there's, there's parking. You can see the double parking here, all the way down. There's an island here, parking along this side, four spaces in the back, and additional parking down along this side. It does fit in the site. There's, I believe, it's a ten-foot setback from each side to the parking lot. There's two-way traffic throughout the entire site. Basically, if you come in, they just wrap around and come back down and out. We do have a six-foot vinyl fence that would run along this side of the property and over here, and along this whole side as well, with some proposed trees shown throughout the site in here. And if you could go to the next drawing, if possible. This computer screen for some reason is showing this building's the level that, that, like I said, is demolished. Since we are adding impervious area and we are within the Zone Two Water Protection District, we have met stormwater standards for TSS removal. We have, basically, the parking lot is graded, so there's a high point running down the center, and everything is shut off to the sides. We do have a two-minute curving along each side as well, basically surrounding, that actually surrounds the entire parking lot. And we have catch basins down, we have catch basins here, here, since everything's shutting off to the sides. And we have a trench drain located right at the entrance as well, so nothing would get out into wall shaft. Those all route to a single oil-water grit separator unit, and then ultimately goes under the ground in a thirty-six inch diameter perforated pipe recharge detention system. And that will overflow out in this direction towards the street through a riprap apron, which I want to point out as well that the existing, you know, the site geometry is, is sloping from wall shaft up towards the back. So, we modeled existing conditions, and we get total runoff numbers for two-ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year storms. And then we propose the design in HydroCAD as well, and come up with those same numbers, with same, same rainfall periods, and we have to match them or be less flow coming off the site as designed, which we, we did need that. I believe that two years ago, and I don't believe there was anything, I mean, coming out of the, the recharge system. We did show some, some patient fence along the sides as well, just to protect any, you know, spillage, dirt, dirt, construction, just so nothing gets onto any, any abutters properties. And that's... Um, that's, that's basically it. Actually, one other thing we could add is a sidewalk to get from the site to the existing Yongqing parking lot here. Uh, the sidewalk would come down within the town right away, uh, like this, and then up into the parking lot. That's basically it. Do you guys have any questions? Trying to answer.
Yeah, we're, we're really happy to take some, some feedback if you have any. Um, again, we've kind of got a zoning board, so.
What is the zoning there currently?
Local business. It was a, it was a single-family residence, previous to, it's been lost.
Does the town have any comment for the, to the board? Eric?
We, um, we do have some, you know, just general concern as far as the site lighting goes. Um, we understand the need for lighting for safety of patrons, um, and also, you know, um, as an anti-theft measure. Um, we, you know, just would want to be sure that fifteen-foot high lights, that, that we're not seeing spillage, um, into neighbors' properties or, you know, right now it's a, it's a dark law, is, are, are the neighbors going to be seeing, you know, these lights from, from the living room or, you know, something to that extent?
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Start to address that, I guess now. Um, I, I guess I didn't point that out on here. Uh, we do have, you can see the lighting, you know, going up the sides. And these, these dashed lines that come around, those are the illumination levels of the lights. Um, and there's a spec over here that shows the, it shows the light. You know, there, there's a shield on the top and that can be adjusted to, you know, prevent spillage. And currently there is no spillage coming over the, you know, over the property lens. Um, but just looking at it, you know, here sitting back, I mean, we could always put the lights in the middle of the parking lot as well. And we kind of go out that way and that way protect it even more. But, you know, I don't think that the spillage would be an issue.
Through the chair, uh, have you guys looked at some of the lower level lighting that's not nearly as tall or.
Um, or the ground?
We, we can do that. You mentioned, uh, you mentioned a six-foot perimeter fence on the outside. If the lights were under that, I'm sure that would certainly help some of the neighbors. Uh, I don't want to take away from the security and, and the means for that, because I understand how important that is, but, uh, we're talking about something that's more than twice the height of the fence, uh, no matter what, if you're in this house despite the spillage, you're gonna, you'll see them out of, out of your house.
Yeah, I guess we could look at a six-foot hole, like a lantern-type.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the town?
We, you know, just noted that you mentioned, um, the installation on the sidewalk and I guess just that that would obviously be worked out with, um, with town engineer.
Right, trying to obviously have, you know, a safe route from the lot to the existing lot. Walshav is very busy, but still don't want to have, um, you know, people walking all over the place. Try to control it as much as possible with the sidewalk. And we don't want people walking on anybody's front lines either.
Sure. Sure, just a kind of quick reiteration of the process conversation we had to think before you guys got here, but typically, and for the members of the public too, tonight would be an introduction to the project, they present it, get board initial feedback, get some comment from the, uh, public. So we will, you know, address you guys in just a minute. And then typically, uh, look to the, um, the town here, it would either go to an engineering review from either the town engineer or from, um, a peer review engineer. We then return and it'd be, you know, typically, once all the items that the engineering companies determine are acknowledged and, and reviewed, return to the board for a final approval. So just so everybody kind of knows how that process goes and, um, you're aware. So turning to the board, any board comment?
John? I have a couple of questions. On the water recharge system, what's the guarantee that it probably takes? Anybody done any boards out there?
We haven't, but we will be doing that. We're gonna have to do that. Um, just talking.
You'd be setting out ledge, you don't know.
Yeah, I've been talking to the, um, site contractor that did, you know, the original site, um, and he did some digging in that area just to remove trees and everything. He said that it is gravel material, um, so we'll have to check it out.
Anybody get a per, demolition permit for the two buildings?
Uh, I, I don't know. I have no idea.
I can answer that. Yes, that was done through the building board health.
And, uh, the requirement that the runoff that you create is equal to or less than the existing? I don't know how that's possible if you have a paved roadway, it's not absorbent at all. You have to increase the, the F1 flow from that, that lot. And then if the recharge chamber does overflow, is there drainage on the street to accept the daylight flow from that drainage system?
Well, it, it, it is designed so that there's no more, there's no faster runoff coming out onto the street than currently is there. So with the, the use of.
That's, that's if the recharge system works and takes the water.
Correct. Which we're assuming it will and we'll know that once we do a test. Um, again, the, the soil actually is mapped as an A soil as well, which is a gravel material. So, you know, we won't know until we dig hole, but, you know, the soil survey online does map this area as gravel area.
Further down the street, there's gravel type banks.
Yeah.
John, any additional question?
No, most of them.
Turn to Jason.
What is the property in between?
Single-family residence.
That's probably the only concern that's going to come up is just people walking back and forth or whatever. Seems well engineered. I, I like it. I mean, obviously you need it. I just see that as the only possible concern you have, but there's ninety-one parking spaces.
Is there potential to mitigate that? I know you have a valet service there. Would it be, make more sense to use that as your valet lot? And encourage people to park, you know, that are running in and out? Is there potential there?
I, when I, if I get proof for this, I'm not going to use the valet anymore. Because I want, because right now I rent the high school. High school gave me fifteen space, plus the insurance company gave me the fifteen space. So that I hired a valet to move the car over there. But, you know, they're always walking back and forth, it's kind of dangerous. So they always want, you know, try to buy some parking, some space in the inside so people can walk to the, you know. I tried to buy my next store, but never did a good deal, so that's a worse, so I had to buy another next one to sell the parking lot. Because valet, they give me a lot of problem. Missing stolen thing, lost the key nearby, get an accident, I got a lot of complaint. Police come over all the time, so, you know. Without a valet, I think customers parking their own, they just little show what to them. Usually they drive the people down and they just one person parking the car and back and forth. I, I think this is more safety for everybody. It go for my business too. So that, that's one concern, you know. Valet, they could have a problem. They do stolen things out of cars, so I got a lot of complaint. Police are the calm, it's not a good idea, plus no good valet company if they give you really good employee over there. Everywhere different people. It's kind of no control. It's kind of headache.
Jason, the only thing I would be concerned with with the single-family home is people traversing back and forth. Would there be, you know, maybe potential on those busiest of nights to have police detail or, um, you know? You know, I, I can see someone leaving there, having had a few, stop, you know, urinate on the, you know, you can kind of see these different scenarios. There's potential for that, that type of behavior.
Most busy night I have to use that lock is only like Thursday, Friday night. And regular day, not really need that lock. So that's why valets do it that three days. It's not every day. Of course, when the holiday, I always have a detail, police detail working on that, you know. Like before we always a problem because maybe can't hide it out and not enough space. If I have that lock, the holiday coming is much easier to control the profit for the police. Because they all go inside and they got hundred space, it should be currently, plus I have sixty-five. So we have a hundred sixty-five space, mine's a ten, so I can hundred fifty-five. It should be easy to make the operate. And when I really, if I really necessarily need a detail, I would, you know, work it on the weekend. But that's what I need. Weekday, I'm not really need that lock. It's not that busy the weekday to need a lock. That's why I only have three-day valet.
Mike? Ryan? One additional thing, and maybe it's something to look into with the building inspector, but I think if you add parking spaces, you have to increase your handicap parking spaces at, on the main site. Uh, it's just something maybe to ask the building inspector. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Looks like there's already three spaces in there. I'll take a look. That might be.
Thank you. True, um, just a quick question, Matt, as far as, um, kind of the zoning component goes. Is there anything in the bylaw that relates to having an off-site parking lot for business? And if so, is that net?
Have to look into that further. I'm sorry. I, I'm not sure you're asking the same question, but, um, you know, we're in, before the ZBA for, um, special permit to operate this type of use in the Aquifer District and the commercial parking lot in this district. So I think that's special permit, ZBA, okay.
Okay, so no additional board comment. I turn to, uh, public comment. So if anybody would like to comment on this application, we'd have you stand up, uh, say your name and address and.
My name is Jim Peach. I live next door, twenty-seven Walshav. And what this would do, put this parking lot in next to my house, first off, it's going to light my house up like a Christmas tree with all the lights it's going to have. You know, give a little history, uh, the lawyer gave it a little bit of history, but I'll give you the rest. The building committee for the school, the new high school, came to my two cousins who owned the house that was on ninety, uh, Offen Street. And they said, if you don't sell us this property, we're going to take it by eminent domain and give you a lot less money. And they said, also, listen, it'll be no impact to your relatives because we're just going to put test courts in there, so there's no problem. So my cousins did sell it to them. As soon as they bought it, they went up and told Chinese restaurant that they were going to section off his parking lot and only give him, I guess, twelve or fourteen spaces unless he moved over to Walshav. So he knew what he was getting into by the size of the lot and moving over there, that he only had so many parking places. And everything that was put in place for that restaurant, like keeping the water within the restaurant, they plow the snow across the street into the wetland. Now, I called the town surveyor three times and told them what they're doing. And he even took a front end load and moved it even further back. And when it rains, the water runs right down the street. The fire department was supposed to check for overcrowding every Friday night, that place is overcrowded, but they never checked. We couldn't get down our street. The street be blocked right off for cats. So we went before the town to get parking signs. And the police would not enforce anything before we had parking signs. We had the parking signs put in, it's still in enforcement. I don't think they wrote a handful of tickets over there. We asked him to have, you know, a, uh, patrolman come over there, a duty patrolman, to direct traffic over there so we could get in and out of our street. And he said, no. Every, uh, Friday after Thanksgiving, can't get down our street. I mean, I, I know he would like to make it bigger, but he said, well, he's purchased, there's no other place, but there's a lot right across the street from his that he could have purchased and brought right across the street from him behind McDonald's. I don't know why he purchased that. Like, probably a cost thing. And he, like, he's already overcrowded, so he's got forty-five spaces at his place, I believe, simply, and you got a ninety-three over there. How, how much overcrowded is it going to be? Is it going to be like a station house down in Ryle where if they have a problem over there, we're going to have people that die? You know? I mean, it, it's, and if you're putting a parking lot between two houses. I could see if he was building a house, I would, I would have checked that out at all. And when they angle that parking lot, the, the water's going to go right towards my house.
Any additional concerns? Did you have any additional concerns? I think I got those down.
That's basically what I got. Thank you.
Matt?
I just, uh, a question off, what Mr. Peach said towards the applicant. Do you know your current occupancy load right now?
I'm sorry?
The occupancy load of the building?
Occupancy, no, no, I have a ceiling, it's a hundred fifty. And the building inspector give me the special permit for standard. I can add a standard fifty. So totals are over two hundred.
Okay, thank you.
That's the town give to me. You know, I know this whole thing started day one. The town gave me a lot of hassle, said do the same thing to them, do the same thing to me. Anyway, domain, all the thing for the high school. I'm not really like to go there, but I got four school there. I lose a lot of money and I just try to, the kid have nice high school, instead of walking by for tennis court. So finally, I take a deal. When I go there, I got a lot of headache by my neighbor, by, you know, a lot of thing, plus I'm doing better. Of course, I'm happy, but the parking came out of problem. You know, it's not the way I want it. He, I, I kind of forced that. I don't know, you guys know where before. It was like a nightmare to me, but everything settled down. We only really, really have a problem with New Year Eve. Uh, every New Year Eve, I had more police detail, three people, police work with me. We always, uh, we always try to, you know, get on bottom of the neighbor. Of course, that day, the travelers bad, but I already did. I got forced that too. It's not, I like that party. I go buy it and I move over there. Across the street, the people, they try to buy the land for them. They don't want to sell to me. They want to, they want to do different deal with me. That's why I can't do it across the street. He want me build a parking lot over there to pay for everything with twenty-year lease. I don't own that.
Uh, Matt?
No, that's, that's why I can't do it.
Sure.
You know, I try everything with this, you know.
Matt?
Yeah, I just, I think it's a, I think we've heard a pretty good deal about some of the past history, the transaction of the property and stuff. And while I do respect that, I think it's important for Eric and I, who weren't really part of that back then, to do a little homework on it and see if there's anything that affects this project as we go forward, but.
I think we should also check, is, is there any liability to the town? By issuing a permit to that parking lot?
Correct.
And when we did so, we had people walking and incidents like you said, with us, the, um, with the cars, you know, a lot of people have had a few drinks and they had dragged them. Is that zoned for a parking lot that far down, how far down the street is it?
Yeah, the local business zoning district is zoned exclusively for that.
How deep?
That's fairly deep.
Usually only three hundred feet.
Build part of the state property, which is the rim.
Yeah, hey, that is an important thing to remember too, that.
It's almost the entire street?
It is the entire street. It's consistent with the zoning and not inconsistent with things that you would see in other places. It's just not currently there. John, did you have a comment before we keep going? Sir?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. My name's Otto Plant. Uh, I got a PhD in, in earth stuff. So I was away for about ten years, um, over two thousand one to two thousand ten. Pretty much came back and taking care of my parents. They're both in a hang, my father's, uh, prohabited. Got memory issues now, so it's.
What's the, the address, are they?
Eleven, Walshav, right here.
So you're in between?
Yes, I'm in between, so there's a lot of things that have just been brought up today. One of which, uh, proposed sidewalk, which is going to take the front yard and the. Driveway. The driveway is still, it's steep enough right now that you can't get up there in a week. So you're going to take a four-foot section of the driveway, there's going to be another two and a half, three feet where you're going to have to grade it. You're going to have to drop the whole dri- driveway, because you're not going to be able to get up it. That's, you know, that's not. That's, you know, that's not gonna be possible. There's, you know, also, the fence that they have for the existing Young Shins, it's open in the back. I got people running through my backyard. I had one guy that was assaulted, you know, he was, somebody robbed him, and then they were gonna beat him up. So he ran through the backyard, got it closed in time. It's a, gee, wasn't that kind of dangerous? Because it's like, you know, the coming down the hill, it's just a stone stock blockway. It's not even a stone blockway, it's just a bunch of cinder blocks. You know, so surprised he didn't kill himself in my backyard. And another time, so they had closed, guy was drunk, his buddies left him. This was the coldest night of the year. I used to work nights after I got my PhD. So I'd be up at like 1:00, because I'd just be getting homework at like 12:31. And I was going to bed, it was like 2:00. Guy's going down the road. It's freezing cold out, it's sub-zero, it's the coldest day. This was last year. I seen him stumbling down the road. Should I go to bed or go rescue this guy? I don't rescue the guy. I had to put him under my coat, take him back to house, tell him to use my phone. His dad was gonna kill him if he was, if he didn't show up for work. And I said, all right, I'll take you to work. Story goes on for that. We'll leave it at that. But, yeah, we had, my brother, let's see, parking lot right here. Somebody threw a beer bottle over, smashed through my brother's window. I brought it up to Mike here, and he says, what do you want me to do about it? So now I'm gonna get beer bottles and trash thrown from both sides, and he's gonna say, ah, what do you want me to do about it? There's a lot of issues that I'll have to bring up later. Because we never really had water problems in my cellar here. We did over back here, we've been trying to grade it off back here. But now they're really realizing that all this drainage system's down here, and for some reason, it's extra dry over here. We put blueberry bushes there because it was always wet. This whole area here was swamped when I was growing up. For some reason, it's dried out. So you got a drainage system here, I got gardens here, I got beehives here, and you're gonna put another drainage system here. I looked at the hydro conduct, you know, so it's gonna be constantly draining this area out here. There was a willow tree here when I was growing up because it was always wet. Well, now you're gonna dry this whole area out. And now, Steve Yarashalas over here, he's got a well. A shallow well. So you're gonna put conduit here, you get all the runoff that's going underneath some lit, you know, it's gonna, underneath all the gravel and coming out somewhere. Because it seems like it's getting into my cellar. Well, that's another issue I'll have to look at more deeply. It's just kind of brought up through listening to the last part. But now you got all this water coming in through here. It's gonna go somewhere, and he's got a shallow well over here. So that's another issue. You know, you have the water that comes down here, it's constantly wet down the road. You have, down here, this is a blind turn. So you got all this runoff that comes up, it freezes. I'm surprised somebody hasn't killed there already. And now you're putting this extra traffic. They come into Young Shins going 35, 40, 50 miles an hour. There's some people that drive down the road going 40, 50 miles an hour. Now they're gonna be coming in past my house, doing 45, 50 miles an hour just to turn in. There's a lot, even a lot more issues I even put down.
Matt, may I just ask you a question? You mentioned that the gentleman across the street has a well. Do you also have a well or are you in public?
I have a well.
Okay, thank you.
It's an Asian well. I'll have to check, I'll have to recheck the water quality of it.
Thank you.
But haven't had any problems with, I haven't checked the water quality of it, powers for But it's an Asian well, but I noticed that you got, you know, I grew up, you couldn't go five or 10 feet without chasing luck up front.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Not at this time. You said this is gonna go to review, and it's gonna go through soulthing again.
Sure.
Leave it to that time. Thank you.
Sure. If you guys are interested in that. Any additional public comment? Sir?
Yeah, that's a fairly narrow street there, you know. The sidewalk would be nice, but, you know, two cars can just about pass on that, and when it's snowing the ground, they can't pass. So you're gonna put a sidewalk there, you know, people are gonna be run over over there by that sidewalk because it's gonna be all ice and snow. The snow's gotta go someplace, you know? And have walking, and it's a grate going up. It ain't like it's flat. It's a grate going up.
I'm sure that's the type of stuff-
Safety wise, I think it's tough to-
During the review, so. Man, did you have any comments?
I do. My name's Mike Peachey, I'm actually in San Juancho as well. I think my biggest issue is that we're considering doing 90 extra spaces. Currently, he has 51 spaces. They're almost tripling the parking spaces for three nights. It doesn't seem like right now there's too much safety issues because you do have valet. So I think that the patrons are actually more safe valet than they are with walking and stumbling down the street. And on top of that, once they're walking and stumbling, because like you said, we've all been Young Shining, it's not like you go there just to have Chinese food. You have plenty of drinks there. I see plenty of people, and like he said, drunks going up and down my street. What do you think they're gonna do? They're gonna urinate, they're gonna vomit, they're gonna throw trash. And that's the issue. The other issue is, it's a parking lot between two family houses. A six-foot fence isn't gonna do anything for my house. I have a backyard, I have a deck. That deck is gonna be overlooking this parking lot. How is a six-foot fence gonna do anything with that? Never mind you already, already the light issues. You can't control that. It's gonna go into our yard. That how, what type of ambiance is that? What kind of value is that gonna add to my house? Nothing. That's gonna devalue both of our properties as well. There's a lot of just neighborhood quality issues in that area with having a parking lot between two houses. And I don't see how building 90 spaces is going to be a legitimate answer for his parking issue because right now, it just seems like he has a big issue. He went into this building with this many spaces, and this, and he's come up with other things. He has 50 spaces over in the upper half, he has the 20 space over there. He's had other options, buying other property. He has lots of options, but it seems like the continuing answer is, what can I do about it? What can I do about it? There's a lot you can do about it. Just continue what you're doing. You're doing a job that you have a valet service. You're keeping it for patient's sake because you're keeping up at your facility until they need. Because we know that not everyone is always coherent to leaving that place. And that's what I'm worried about. Is it's gonna, is it gonna be increasing now because you have a parking? The fact that you're gonna have even more drunks now in armor? There's gonna be a lot of drunk driving? It just, it's not safe.
I don't think there'll be any more. It'll just be a different spot.
Exactly, I agree.
Point out to you clearly the difference between the last permit being a special permit and this one being a site plan, which is a different, different level of oversight for this board as well. Just here aware of that.
May I further elaborate?
Sure.
So this is, I believe this is going to the zoning board of appeals as well? And that's on Thursday, correct, this week? And that's the special permit review to see if the use is allowed, or is it the act for-
Yep.
So this is the design aspect of it, which wouldn't be approved in a sense, until those special permits are finalized with the zoning board, so.
Special permit for the parking lot?
For the parking lot.
If this were accessory, if it was contiguous, it would be having too much conversation about use of the ZBA in particular.
Correct. And so just wanted to further elaborate, this is the design aspect. You guys are here in advance because of the scheduling, because planning board meets two days prior to ZBA, so getting concurrent applications is something folks do all the time, but the use itself is more a concern for the ZBA. For the residents, that this is more limited, our oversight here is a lot more limited than in previous cases. Final comments?
Fine, you know, because I said about the fence, how it doesn't go in the back and they're already coming through the yard. Well, with the proposed fence, it doesn't go all the way to the back. So you're gonna have people parking back here, have a little potty coming through the back, right through the yard. Because it's, they said the fence is closed off, they have unfinished the fence. And the same thing is proposed here. That's a serious issue.
All right, so I think kind of accomplished what we would like to accomplish tonight, which is get a kind of initial comments from both the board and the public, which I'm sure the applicant has heard. Next steps on this would be to move towards review. I'd ask the town for recommendation on what that would be.
The town engineer has requested that this go to peer review. And the town would be amenable to the board, you know, selecting a, either of the other two engineers to review.
Do you have costs for those?
We have soliciting costs. Seeing that there are costs all, they're pretty close. We, you know, if the board would like to, like a solicitor costs, we could.
Sure, furthermore, the reason being is we weren't sure which peer review company was going to be engaged with the Prime Motor Group. So we didn't want to double the task for that company. So we figured that the, one of the remaining two companies could be a candidate for this. Would the board entertain the idea of the town soliciting proposals from those two and working it out with, you know, as long as they mutually agree with the applicant to proceed without it coming back to the board?
Yes.
For the time being, right? Yeah. Further point of clarification, I'd almost be willing to ask the applicant this evening if they have a preference as to which engineer, because we're, whatever design, I'm not engineering comfortable with either.
Waterman or water? They don't have a problem working with either.
Saying, like, get estimates along the way, by the applicant, and make that decision collectively for the town.
Okay. We brought a full set of the, full-size plans, so you could supply those, get them whatever else they need.
You need a vote from us to be able to do that. Okay.
As far as continuing just timeline, not sure, two weeks. We can keep it on the agenda. I don't have any problem with that, but I'm not sure what Matt's gonna recommend.
Go to the first meeting, I cover.
We could do the same thing we talked about with the last hearing and keep it on and move it if we have to.
September 27.
Don't know how many agenda items the board has that night, or who has birthday parties.
Matt, do you, or Eric? 27th, sir. So entertain a motion to continue to the 27th?
I'll make it. Continue to the 27th.
27th. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Move the time. Matt, can we defer additional comment, or content in minutes till next meeting? Or do you have? I don't have additional content. I prefer to have the minutes voted on if possible.
I make a motion to accept the meetings in minutes of July 26, 2016, and August 9, 2016, has written it.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
No, we're gonna stay awhile. You've been in for three hours.
Somebody else make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Loudly, aye. Any objections? Thank you, everyone.
I think we'll stay awhile.